Call Council meeting in the winter. March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Any additions to the agenda?
No additions to the agenda.
Citizen comments?
No citizen's comments. Oh, you talk about your project number.
No citizens' comments? The Senate agenda. Look out here. Oh, GBT presentation, I'm sorry.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd sent Jamie a PowerPoint, but I don't know if she cut that. Okay, perfect, pass on to you. My name's Kyle Baller. I'm in charge of our business and customer development for GBT Communications. For those of you that aren't aware, we've been a communication company since nineteen fifty-three, so coming up here on about seventy years. We've been in St. John providing some form of communication services since about two thousand and eight. Before I get into the presentation, I do want to pass on our President and General, my Andrew Bo Rebel. He apologized he couldn't make it tonight. Usually he would be the one down here and visiting, going over this stuff and answering questions, but he had some prior engagements that he had to be at. So you'll have to put up with me here for a couple of minutes. I'll try to keep this pretty short, but I also want to open it to any questions that any of you have as well. So I think you probably are all pretty aware, maybe, maybe not, but as I mentioned, we've been in town since two thousand and eight, and currently we provide most of your town's services with something called coaxial cable. That's how we provide internet, voice, video services. And this year, GBT, we've decided to make an investment of over a million dollars to upgrade the coaxial system here within the city limits of St. John. And so we're going to upgrade all of our current infrastructure that's out there to actually bring fiber optics to every home and business within the town. I know you alluded already to some construction and stuff like that. So I apologize, we're probably a week or two late of getting down here and kind of explaining. Like I said, I know we've worked with you guys and we appreciate the city and everybody being easy to work with, trying to share some boring and stuff like that to make these things go over as best as possible. But like I say, our intentions is we're starting right now of deploying fiber optics, mainline and that type of stuff to, down the alleys and such. And then over the course of the next couple of months, we'll actually be switching out people's coax for fiber. We'll be contacting those that have our current services. And then anybody that doesn't, we've networked it all to where, you know, if somebody would move into town, that didn't take it. Initially, we have it all engineered, so every home, every business, like I say, will be able to have fiber optics. So you may be saying, you know, if you're not in the communication game, what does that mean? Is that, you know, is that a, is that a big deal? A lot of big cities entertain or try to recruit companies to bring fiber to them because a lot of times it's an economic driver. It's kind of a level playing field for businesses and stuff because the communication and the reliability of fiber allows you pretty much to do anything that you need for an internet, from a communication, from a technology standpoint. So that's really what we're doing is right now, again, I'll throw out some numbers that may mean absolutely nothing to some of you, but right now, our internet connection can deliver about two hundred and fifty megabits per second of download speed. When we put fiber in, it'll have the capabilities of doing ten thousand megabits per second at each home or business. So obviously, you know, prices vary and stuff like that, but it now will have the capabilities, and that's at, like I say, not just at some of the businesses, but every home and business within the city limits of St. John. So just to kind of allude on a couple of those things, you can look at the slides. I won't, I won't go over everything. Kind of talks a little bit about some of the advantages of what fiber optics does, but I just wanted to touch base a little bit. So we are subcontracting with Amron Construction. They are doing all the boring and everything like that. They're out of Great Bend is who's doing, doing that particular work for us. And then this week, you'll start seeing a company, trucks drive around, that's Trans Hill, and they're out of Oklahoma, and they'll be doing our aerial work. So we subcontract all that stuff. Part of me being down here a little bit late is we had anticipated these projects would start a little bit later on in the year, but with supply chain and everything, we were able to lock down some, some contractors, and they said, hey, we can be there in a couple of weeks, and if we don't do it now, we're looking at getting on the end of the list and it being, you know, towards the end of the year. So we apologize about maybe being just a little bit lagging in the rears from a contact standpoint. Like I mentioned, we will, we'll be sending out letters to all of our current customers, kind of letting them know what we're doing, and then we'll send out some, some flyers as well to the town, just trying to let them know, you know, hey, fiber's in, available or on its way. And we also have our local store here in town that anybody can stop in and get answers, ask questions, that type of stuff. So with that being said, we're really excited to continue to be a partner down here. Like I say, over a million dollar investment from, from our company because we believe in this area. If you don't know our company, we're a local company. We serve most towns about this size, so we don't have stockholders that we, you know, have to make happy or something like that. We really, we, we live here, we work here, and all of us grew up in these small towns. We, we understand the importance of making sure that have world-class technology to keep them moving and thriving and maybe recruit some businesses and people to town, too. So that's, in a nutshell, all I have. Does anybody have any questions or? If, if anything, if anybody does think anybody or anything, they have my information, and I'll just leave a business card there as well, just in case anybody needs to take a picture, feel free to reach out to us, email us, call us. We do have one gentleman down here from GBT, even though we have the subcontractors, we have one full-time GBT person that's overseeing everything, and so he'll kind of be on-site every day typically. So, okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for the other gentleman? The Senate agenda, three minutes of regular council meeting, March first, two thousand twenty-two. I don't entertain a motion.
So move.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed? Pass this five minutes. Appropriation ordinance, three fifteen, two thousand twenty-two, sixty-seven thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars, forty-two cents. I don't entertain a motion if you approve that.
So move.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed? Pass this five minutes.
Abstain.
For you abstain? Marshall Sin is abstaining.
Right.
In Ryan's district. Because they got them into the. Department heads, electric department, Jeff Williamson.
Well, like Kyle said, we're boring. We've got all the mainline stuff that we were going to put in, and the drops we don't have to the houses yet, we're hoping to get started next week on them. I added a piece on there that kind of fit in with where we were at down there, so I came short a couple hundred feet of pipe. So I bought a five hundred foot roll today to make up the difference for that. So we had enough wire and stuff, we just didn't have quite enough pipe. So anyway, we're getting in the ground, and we stopped for a couple days to read meters, and we're going to start again first of the week. So anyway, that's where we're at.
Any questions for Jeff, the councilman? You got off easy tonight, Jeff.
I, I thank you.
Water department, Jason Watt.
Well, on the water side of it, I called Don from K D U G to see how that permit was coming along on the water tower, and first the last week, and he sat there and told me that he had just got the permit, looked at and reviewed, or sent it on to get reviewed, and of course, I sat there and got an email from them saying that the people at Viking needs to find up six or seven more items to do. So needless to say, that is going to be a little longer down the road until they get that done. And then the second thing on the water is unfortunately, the line did not get marked on Pearl and Second, and it did get hit. And of course, all you know that the water did get shut down to get that repaired. And looking down the road, I'd like to see this, this summer, or in the fall, or the spring, to sit there and see if we can't get another valve installed on that line so this won't happen again, and go on down the road on that part of it. And I had to put out a water boil alert for forty-eight hours and just make sure that cover our rears and nobody gets sick. And so that being said, that was what happened, and, and oh my gosh, it won't happen next time. So sewer, on the sewer part of it, the sewer mains, which you guys should hopefully have maps there, I marked that out at ten thousand feet, and I came up short on that, so I added Brock Street on there, and it came up to ten thousand one hundred and two feet. Point forty-two. So it's, this was the second one. I don't know if you guys got this one, but the first map shows everything I got done, we got done and camered on two thousand twenty-one, and the orange here is two thousand twenty-two. And I like to go ahead and, if I could get the okay, and I can get that in the works of getting done for this year. And if you guys need to, that's, that's, this is what it is. I don't know if you get the color chart in there or not, I'm not for sure if you can see it, but that's what it is, and it's.
Is that a new map? I don't think they got that copy.
Well, I, I sent that to her when I was going to class last time, and she said she'd rather have me here for this. So I did, I did send that, though.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the color, but anyway, that's it. And it's pretty much remains to all of Sixth or Seventh Street, because that is Stone Fifth, which you know, you've heard. And then all of between, from Sixth Street down to First, between West Street and Nutty. And all from Sixth Street to First Street, there between Main and Exchange. And then the two cutoffs there between Second, First and Second, Third, Fourth, Fourth and Fifth. And then the other ones over there by the school in between, what is it, Pearl and Prairie. And a little bit of Brock Street because I just wanted to get that full ten thousand feet this year, but I just had to add on a hundred and two.
Did they have an idea how soon they could start on it, Jason?
He did not give me one until, yeah. He said he'd just put me on the list, and when they can get here, they can get here.
Yeah, I think it's definitely a good start. I think what we did last time was, was a help.
And if you, if you feel like we need to change it around, all I need is a highlighter, and we can change it around. So those are the ones we, we haven't messed with Brock in a while, and that was a short stretch. I thought we could just sit there and get that whipped out. Like I said, it was an extra hundred and two feet. And, and he told me that would not be too much of a difference.
Remind me, we did, this is this camera for ten thousand and so many feet. And when we lined, the stuff that we lined this year.
We lined, the lining is on that sheet right there, the yellow.
Right, but how many feet was that? Do you remember?
Oh, boy. Not without looking again, no.
Yeah.
We camered, we camered ten and did less lining than that.
Yeah, because we just picked up the.
Yeah, the worst parts, the worst parts. So that's why I was thinking we could least camera that, and being that Seventh is getting so, there's something wrong with it. I don't know if it's grease getting down the lines. We have been vacuuming that thing, or cleaning it for quite a, quite a few times. And I'd like, I'm, I'm hoping that we see something on the camera, there's something wrong, and we can get that line done. Cleaned, camered, and lined, you know, I mean, that's why I'd love to see that line done, because we are doing it several times. Because if I just stopped down on the grater the other day, and Brian flagged me over and sent there saying we got a problem again. So we sat there and cleaned it.
Just curious, when they come in and line it, they could, they go in and clean it and camera it again?
Yeah.
So I'm just, just curious, we step, skip this step and go to?
Well, if, if.
Just say, I want to line, just curious, I don't know.
Well, I'm not going to argue. Yeah, if they, if they, yeah.
Seventeen thousand dollars. We think we're gonna, you know, these are bad spots, and we know we're gonna line them. Can we save seventeen thousand?
The other, the other one, I like to see them all done, but I'm, I gotta say, I gotta tell you the truth, the other ones on that Seventh Street, I like to see camered and, or cleaned, camered, and then done. But the other ones, I don't know, I mean, we haven't had those camered, so I don't know if they would be, you know, they might be in perfect condition, better, they might be eight, or ones and twos, where the other ones were twos and threes. So I, I just don't know whether, I mean, you know, if we could sit there and do that again. And if we could sit there, if, if they do, if they do, and then, and, and two of those lines need to be camera, or done, then I could say, as soon as you guys see something bad, get right back in there and do it again, or to line it, and then that might save somebody. I could ask you. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Instead of.
I'm just wondering.
If you, if you see, if you see a hole, or this, that, and the other in this section, go ahead and just get, get planned on doing it right now. But they still, I think they'll still have to come in there, and they'll have to measure it, clean it, you know, measure the holes.
Sure.
And stuff like that, so I don't know.
It just sounds like to me they're maybe doing it twice. Right now.
Right, and they, they did, they did that the last time, because the ones we sat there and then, after they camered it, we looked through it and looked through it, and what, it was like six months later, or whatever, four months later, and then we sat there and got the okay, and then they had to do it all over again. So yeah, I mean, it's kind of a.
If they can just go ahead and do what Ryan is suggesting, then I'd say, let's go ahead and do that. I mean, if it'll save the city some money, then I say, let's do it. So I'd find out from them and see if they're willing to do that.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, that'd be great.
Right, okay.
You were talking about just doing Seventh Street. Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking, it seems like to me, it, we did like seventy-five hundred foot of lining. It just seems like it to me. And if we, you know, we need that with. Well, my, it looks like almost everything from the north, from Ninth to Seventh dumps into Seventh Street. Right. That's a big one. And if you guys have already had tons of problems along Seventh Street, I don't see why, unlike you, I don't see why we're wasting money to have it camered, let's just.
Let's just do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm all for that.
You know, now, these other ones, I could, I could possibly see running a camera through them just to see what we have. Yes. But they're going to run a camera through them, clean them, measure the pipe, and then order the stuff to line it.
Yes. Then they'll sit there and, and sit there and let us see the films, and we'll sit there and go through them and say, oh, yeah, that's definitely a bad spot, there's a big hole right there, and then go down another section and say, oh, yeah, there's a little hole, and the rest of it's going to be nice. But the, I don't know if it's worth sectioning that off. I'd, like, if you only have a, a one block and a one block, and this block's bad and this one's good, should we just do the whole thing for two blocks? I don't know why we wouldn't.
As major as that one is, I mean, I would just might.
Is that a ten-inch line?
Yeah.
I think so.
Yes.
Which is the biggest we got for sewer, isn't it?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. But I'd like to see all of Seventh just get done.
How many feet was Seventh Street?
It was.
Twenty-four eighty-five. Twenty-four eighty-five.
Oh, did you get that one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
You got it, okay.
Twenty-four hundred and eighty-five. I can't read my glasses. But I don't, I mean, I don't know the best way to handle that, and then do it wise, you know, take it wise, if you think you're going to do it, then just do it. I mean, I'm pretty comfortable with doing all of Seventh Street without cameraing it the first time, so maybe we just tell them, we just want to do Seventh Street no matter what, knock that off the list and, and camera the rest of this.
That's great, yeah.
I mean, it'd only be eight thousand feet, or do we come up with another twenty-four hundred feet to put on there to do? Because we'll be back at it deciding, or somebody will be deciding over what we have camered this year, what is the worst and what needs to be fixed. But we know we have a problem on Seventh Street. Do it maybe.
Well, that's what I know, yeah.
Or you just say, which maybe they don't know, that depends on the size of the pipe, how much it would cost to do everything in the orange. Which is going to be probably two hundred and fifty thousand, probably, and they just, just guessing by what we did last time, you know, which was, when the two hundred thousand was up somewhere. Pretty low. Two hundred.
So what you're, what you're saying is you're, you're trying to cover, or average the cost of what it is to do that, and then just do it all, line it all.
Right. I mean, is it worth spending seventeen thousand dollars, or do we just go in there and line everything in orange?
I don't like to line everything in orange.
The only thing I would say is, you know, and I don't know, I mean, it's probably all bad, everything in town's probably bad, needs to be lined, but we haven't covered the whole entire town yet either. I mean, we don't know for sure what's down there. I mean, we could spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on stuff that doesn't need to be lined, because it's not in that bad a shape. And then next year, we've got three hundred thousand dollars worth of stuff that needs lined when we camera it. I mean, I can, I can foresee just doing Seventh Street a hundred percent, but I don't know about the rest of it.
It's too bad we don't know what, you know, truly, I mean, needs to be after Seventh.
That's why I said, do we, do we just take?
And then do.
Do we just take the Seventh Street off and just say, we're, we're lining that no matter what, we have the rest of this camered? I mean, their quote was for ten thousand. What if you did these Main, Seventh Street, and you did this Main one, Main one, so you take out these three, they're just alleys, you know, not feeding into the Main, whatever you call it. So at least three and seven. Just an idea. I mean, those are catch and catch. Maybe they're all the same size, I don't know. Catching the Main.
Yeah.
These three, and then that Seventh. You make that down for the footage, and maybe you'd be back around that seventy-five hundred foot, seventy-five hundred foot like you've done before. I guess you could have had it right there. Eighteen, twenty-four. Looks like roughly... I'd say you're pushing right at seven thousand feet if you take out these.
That and Brock.
Those three and Brock. Yeah.
There's not big usage on Brock, but it was, it was small enough, I could throw that extra ten thousand plus another hundred and two.
So you might be, you're going to be between seventy-five and eight thousand feet. Just an idea, I mean, for me, I'd maybe ask them, what do you charge for that stuff, you know, to, to line it?
I can, yeah, I can.
Without cameraing it, actually.
That's fine. I'm not arguing.
Yeah, because they'll go in there, clean it, camera it, figure out what it is, and then put the liner in.
I'll tell them to forget the, forget that, let's just get it lined and.
Get us a quote on that.
On that, sure.
Is this the main one here? Is there a problem? You know? Yeah, Jason, on the block west of Main, or, the block west of West Street.
Be half a block west. It'd be between Gray and West Street.
That all of those from the west side are feeding into?
Mm-hmm.
Is there problems over there?
Not, not right now.
Not now. We did have some.
No, we did.
Took care of it.
I think most of them problems were back up around Fifth or Sixth Street, weren't they?
Between Fourth and Fifth.
Fourth and Fifth.
I just looking at, that's a lot of, there's several things dumping in there, and it's kind of a straight, a straight, surely, some of this is all the same size, and you just get some of that north and south.
Once the, yeah, once the paper towel quit, it's been pleasant.
I mean, what did you do?
No, definitely. It was those blue towels, the blue wash towel, shop towel.
It was lovely. So you're talking from here to here?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know where. Oh, that must pick up everybody. That's like, oh. On West Street? No, that's, I can't think of his name right now. There's what used to be the corner store, and there's that house. Yeah.
Yeah, so that was buying that, yeah, the old man in that, back in his backyard.
Yeah.
It's right down the street from his shop, in the, in the ditch.
That goes up to, they catch this bog.
Yes, there is.
And it's been lined, too, but that hooks on the Seventh, and goes that way.
Has that been addressed with that individual?
I think it has.
It has, but whether it's, whether or not, I don't know.
Does that, does that main line go clear to his house?
No.
His shop?
I'm on second.
If you're talking about the one coming off that.
Between West and Gray Street.
It comes.
It goes right behind Chris Mansell's house.
And it goes up, it goes up to the, to the back where the old hospital was, and it turns and comes out to, out to West Street and then back to North.
Manhole right there.
There's a manhole right there in his, in his yard there in front of the shop, yeah.
So you guys are thinking price that one along with these other three and seven?
Yeah, what are you thinking about, maybe figuring this one separate from?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's it, yeah.
Figure the four main lines in orange, and then figure that one separate, and see what that one.
And then they could see.
Okay.
So they're going to come in and camera all of, like, would they come in and camera that one, or are we going to get a quote to just camera it?
I would, I would just, I mean, we, we want a quote before we approve all that, so I would just get a quote to do everything you have in orange on the main lines, and then throw that other one in separately off to the side in case we want to add it in.
What about those two block, or that block, two blocks short on, you didn't want those on there, correct?
No, just, just the Main.
Yes, yes.
Just your.
Right, north and south ones. Just this one and this one.
And that one.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. And this one.
And this one.
And this one.
And this one.
Yeah.
That's separate.
And I might as well just go right to there.
And that's just to come in, camera, clean, line, all of the.
Sure.
Yep.
And that one, you just want to sit there and get a price to?
Maybe add to the rest of them.
As in line?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
All right, I'm like, just. Want a gray quarter, gray stream? Where all those drops are.
Well, like I said, I mean, I don't know, but I think even if we, we need to think about this, because I know I brought it up once, the county has a bunch of COVID money that they don't have spent, and I'd sure be willing to ask for some of their help with that money towards our project.
And I'd sure be willing to ask for some of their help with that money towards our project. I mean, they only have a couple of years.
We do some lining this year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, because we spent a little over two hundred thousand last year, and I know right now the sewer replacement is sitting at a hundred and sixty-one thousand.
Well, we budgeted to do it, and then we didn't have to actually pull it out.
I think we pulled some of it out, because that was closer to two hundred thousand, but I still think, yeah, I think we absolutely need to do more.
Well, other than that, on the sewer part, Ivan, uh, from KDHE showed up on March third, and I was in class, so they took care of that for me. And he expected the wastewater facilities, and he hasn't got back to me on the report on that yet, so. And then on the street side of it, of course, the mosquito foggers are gonna begin, getting be checked here in April, first of April, first part of April. And I don't know if they, she told you about the permit on the Eighth Street? I got it back quite a while, it only took me three days, and it was done. Wish the KDHE would do that, but it didn't happen. And we finished filling up the cracks on these hot mixed streets and used up the rest of our stuff on that. And on the equipment side of it, I was, uh, hoping that you guys would let me bring in Vincent and, uh, from Key Equipment to do a little spiel on a back truck. And that way, I get to cut out the middleman, that way, if you sit there and like what he has to say, you could talk, visit with him. And if you don't, then I, then we're clear on it. But he keeps on asking me, and, and I know, he knows our truck's still not running, and it's not doing good, and it still needs a lot of money put into it. So I told him I would sit there and ask you guys if you'd let me invite him to the next meeting to, uh, talk about another back truck.
So is that a brand new?
No, 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 it's not a brand new. But.
What about a back trailer? Are those worth it, aren't, I mean, like a?
I've never used one, so I don't know. Never had one.
Is that what, GPT head down there?
Mm-hmm. But, uh, I don't know about the reel of going down, cleaning sewers.
Yeah, I don't. I don't know what the depth reach on it, how much back.
And I don't know about that, and then the reel on that for itself to go down. And then the other thing I'm thinking about pretty quick here is storm sewers. You know, that's coming around, and we kinda need to get some of this done, which we talked about, and soon as we started on that, and went to the, it went down. And so that's why I told him, I told him I'd sit there, and I said, I'd love to sit there and, uh, talk about this and, and all, just hear him out, and then go on down the road. If you guys don't want to, at least, you can always say no, but then you can always say yes, too. So.
How big a truck is it?
It's a single axle, it's a low-profile truck, and it'll even fit in a bay over there, because I, I. One of the things I don't like about this truck, it's way too big, I'm a short guy, and every time we have to open the back hatch on that, I, it seems like I have to go change clothes and take a shower after that. So that's what, it's a slow-profile truck, it's all hydraulics, we don't have to worry about the latches on the back of it to dump the sewage. And so it's, it's a pretty nice deal, because he brought one over for us to play with, and I wish he wouldn't have done it now, so.
What, so what is the story with the, the back truck?
Still waiting, that was part of that, I, on the equipment part of it, uh, I haven't, I have got the numbers for that small motor in the back, and still haven't heard from him. Jamie went and got those for me, and haven't heard nothing back from him yet. And on top of that, there is a hydraulics leaking real bad that we need to sit there and start working on, and, uh, the, the axles on the rear end, about three of them are leaking. And it's just, it's, it just needs a major, major overhaul. And that's compared to pricing on this, that, and the other, I just thought, well, maybe we could sit there and let Vincent come in and, and talk to you guys about some. So it's totally up to you, you say yes or no, and I'll tell him no, and I'll tell him yes.
I don't have a problem with that. Like you said, the worst we'll say is no.
That's, that's right.
I don't know how much we're gonna have in our old.
Well, yeah.
I had no idea, I mean, I hope we got, I hope we could fix it. But I don't even know what a back, how much for a new back truck costs, I mean, a lot, probably, yeah. I bet it's, I bet it's not cheaper than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Didn't know what it is.
Well, that's why I'd sooner just let him come and talk to you guys, and you guys just sit there and think it over. It cuts the middle guy out right here, so he keeps on asking me, I was like, I can only, I can't answer for five or six of you.
I don't have a problem listening to them, but. It's gonna come down to a money deal, I mean.
Yes.
It's free to listen to them.
That's right, exactly right it is.
Was that the?
I agree.
Okay. Well, actually, that's all I have now, sorry for taking so much time, though.
Uh, Jason, um, on the twenty-first of April, there's gonna be community service day over at the high school. Um, maybe you're aware of that, uh, has, anybody from the school contacted you regarding, uh, using a truck to haul, uh, material to the tree dump into the dump itself?
No.
Okay. Will any vehicles be available on that day to, to perform that?
We can, we can get, we can get, yeah, we can get a couple of them.
Okay, excellent, good, thank you.
Jason, what's the, uh, story on Fifth Street as far as someone said there's rock gonna get put down, or Jamie had said a wall back, or is there? You know anything about that?
I talked to Chad about this, and he was just as about as, out there as far as I was. I have no idea, I was told to go talk to him at the meeting, and I did. And he says, well, I have rock for sale, I have this, that, and the other, and I thought, okay. And I, I said, well, I'll leave it at that, because I was, I didn't know for sure what to do with it, or where, where it was going there. And so I, I did call him, and I told Jamie what the, what the deal was there, and that's where we left it.
I think she's gonna talk to Chad again and see, like, if the donor actually wanted to do it. I think there was a talk, but there was no, like, confirmed answer.
Okay. Just curious.
So am I.
Any more questions for Jason in the council? Tori? Police chief don't have anything, fire chief Mike?
Um, I wanna add Jacob Melton to the fire department, he just moved to town here not too long ago.
I had to make a motion to add Jacob Melton to the fire department?
He's got, got a motion and a second on the table to, uh, add Jason.
Jacob Melton?
Fire department? All in favor? All opposed?
That's all I have.
Thanks, five and O. Go ahead and get him on. Uh, any questions for Mike, if you guys got, guys are known? City administrator, Jamie's not here, you anything, Pam?
Nope.
City attorney John? He's always got lots of stuff. Nothing?
Oh, no, can you hear me? No.
No, I didn't hear you, I called him. Is that a first, or?
Well, he wasn't here last meeting.
That's supposed to be for double with the next meeting, then.
I was here in spirit.
Moving on, old business. Anybody talk about the property code violations on six forty-seven, six fifty-one, eight oh eight? Truck parking, engines for the power plant?
I went to, I went to Bruce's service, uh, a week ago, uh, talked to the guys from Ed State's. At this point, everything's still running about as close as what it could run, and I think, you know, they're, they're still planning on getting here in good time. They, they've hired a couple of technicians to, um, kinda take Bruce's place anyway, so. He said, you know, it was gonna slow it down some, but he thought maybe that, you know, we'd still get to rolling here before too long, but. Nice weather helps quite a bit, so speeds things up for everybody, but, uh, that's about all I know, so.
Boil water projects?
Little project beginning here last minute, I guess, um, microchip on the inside, whatever he's looking for.
Oh, really?
Four to six weeks.
From last Tuesday?
Well, last meeting, so, yeah.
Or, yeah, I guess two weeks, two weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
Three and five weeks.
Same, man.
Swimming, swimming pool?
Have you contacted anybody to come take a look at that?
Not yet, no. Tried one, no answer.
I thought she had someone come.
I thought that too.
Pam, Jamie contacted anybody on that?
I think, yeah, who has with one of them that I called. Um, I'm not sure who else, Jamie.
She told me she'd contacted Pool.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, who did, who did you call for the pool?
Pool's Plus in Hutch.
And that's the only company?
I contacted my pool.
Is that the only company? Is that the only company?
No, I had three different calls into, um. There was a company out of Wichita, a company out of Hutch, and then I think there was one more, and the one in Hutch said, like, they had called you and said they weren't coming. That it was a water main issue, and then the one in Wichita wouldn't hear from my call. So the Pool's Plus is gonna come out as soon as it can.
Are we looking at any kind of delay for the pool opening at all? Jason, are we looking?
Yeah, I mean, I'm doing everything I can on my end to get the leak taken care of, but we're still working on that list.
I just asked if we're looking at any type of delay for the pool opening this summer?
No, I didn't know if they were gonna still come and try to do the side walls or not, but, uh, if they're not there, we'll fill it.
Okay, cleaning contracts, like last week you guys talked about splitting it up or something, I haven't heard a word about it. They're asking Steve about it or something.
You should put it in the administrative report.
Talking about splitting them, clean, some clean contracts to pay Steve three hundred dollars per month for the wet center and Pam's three hundred fifty dollars per month on the city office.
I don't know whether that's been talked about or.
Well, that's, we, we basically left it to Jamie to see if they were willing to split it, and I'm assuming that's.
Well, the price used to be for the wet center is two seventy, and here is two thirty, so that's made up five hundred. So she went, like, she increased it to three hundred for wet center and then two fifty for here, instead of, you know, the odd numbers. That's the only difference from last meeting.
I mean, that's fine with me, but it's fine with you and Steve.
Yeah, we talked to Steve, and he's okay with it. We just wanna tell you the price, that, that's the only difference.
So John, do we have to approve that and then make a new contract?
I don't know if there is a. I don't, I think it probably predates me, but you would need to approve it. We may be authorized that the two fifty and the three hundred, or, or just give me permission to look it over.
We may be trending on some violation because she's the one that's part of the contract.
Well, if she's not voting on it, so that's okay, but the issue is you would have to approve it. I mean, there's just.
One of the things I think, uh, I think the, the optics of it is kind of would look, I'm just gonna say it, okay? I'm just gonna be blunt about, the optics of it don't look good when you have, already have an employee that works there, who's gonna get to pay, uh, that type of money, um, to clean an office that she's already in. Okay? I don't know how the rest of you feel about that, but the optics, people around town are gonna talk, you know? They're going to say something, and I don't know whether or not anyone's going to actually complain about it. But, I mean, the clean does need to get done.
Right. I guess it wasn't ever.
I don't see it being an issue before.
Part of her job when she.
Right. But you, you, you're looking, you gotta look at it from everybody else's point of view, we look at it that way, and we know that. But you could look at everybody else's point of view from outside here, who's not in the, uh, who's not in here all the time, that's what they're going to look at. They're going to see it, I don't, I don't, personally don't see it that way, but others may, you know, so.
What's the time, what's the time? Like, are you doing it during your, your time, or are you doing it after hours of your actual job?
I'm planning on doing it after.
That's where it's different to me.
Right.
That's not doing it during.
Right, it's not doing it during your job, but again, again, people are going to, people are people, you know, they're going to do, you know? It, it doesn't, for most people, it's just not gonna look right. They don't see what we see, though.
The other thing about it, though, is we opened it up and we made it public that anybody could have done it.
Right. Anybody could have put their bid in, so, yeah.
As, as far as I'm concerned.
And she, and she put her bid in, and that's fine, I don't, like I said, I don't have a problem with that, but just wanted to throw that out there.
Throw that out there, too.
Huh?
She's also gonna be claiming PD that never gets cleaned, so just throwing it out there, too.
I'm okay with it, I.
You've been paying somebody.
I don't have a problem with it, I just didn't want to, didn't want to jump on.
I understand how it's different, unlike.
I just didn't want to get us in trouble.
It's those issues that are hard to avoid.
Yeah.
In a smaller committee.
Oh, of course. Again, I don't have a problem with any of that, I, you're gonna do it, you do it, you know, you're gonna do it, like you said, at your own time, and it's, you know, re-enterprise.
It would be, to answer Marshall's question, you'd have to do, just do two separate votes, and then just give me permission to review the contract.
So I would make a motion to. Hire Steve Schultz for three hundred dollars per month to clean the wet center.
Got a motion, a second on the table? Marshall Sanders' motion, uh, John Christie's second. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Pass is five and O.
I'd make a motion to hire Pam Watson for two hundred and fifty dollars per month to clean the city office, and for John to review the contracts.
Second.
Got a motion on the table made by Carl Bunker, right here, second? Marshall with.
Carl's second.
Carl's second. All in favor? All opposed? Pass is five and O. New business? Sewer cleaning and camera? We discussed it? Code red system?
You're up.
You're up. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So there is information on a code red system that I reached out after we had the water, um, main break, and it's basically just an informational system. Um, I chose this system because it can not only call and text cell phones, it can go straight to landlines, and it also allows us to, um, work together. Um, I was thinking, like, getting ahold of Danton and using, like, the rec and maybe, like, the library if they don't use the school system, and use it, um, as, almost like a community calendar. As well as emergency alerts, um, our, our phones blew up, I, I really wanna say, like, four hundred people might have called us that day. And I know a couple of people called with concerns on, on letting everyone know, so, um, I looked up just a couple different ones, if you guys want me to look up more and give you more. I didn't even provide information on the other one that I had picked up because I, I didn't like it. This, this is the one that, that seemed like it would fit us the best, and it would allow that, um, the interaction with adding, like, you basically can add categories, and people can sign up for what they want to know about. And so I thought that would be a useful tool, um, for the entire community on, on different things that was going on. But, I mean, and it's definitely a solution to the problem, like, if we had a problem, people, people didn't know about what was going on. I know people, a couple of you expressed concern. This is one of the options that we can try to do to move forward. If not, no big deal.
I think we need to have some sort of service like that, but we apparently ended it.
Yeah, there wasn't enough people signing up for it and the, the system that we used to have is very limited of what it can do. Um, it can't call landline. I think it's basically text on what we used to have and I think it cost per letter or per word. So I'm like that back in the day. I can't remember for sure.
This sounds similar. I think Jamie mentioned that this sounds similar to what the school use, you know, where.
I believe so.
Where it did that text, email and, uh, uh, call landlines, you know. So we're looking at fifty-one hundred for a total order on this if, if council was to go ahead and move forward?
And that goes per year, was it?
Yeah, one year subscription?
What's, what's that come out of?
I mean, we can, we can, it can come up water and light office. That's like all of our billing systems and newsletters and, you know, publications and stuff like that come out of water and light office. Or we can split it between general wa, general office and the water light.
Or even one percent?
Yeah, if you are willing, one percent can be used.
And getting people to sign up, we do it the same way as we did the last time?
We might be a little bit more aggressive if we get this because last time, you know, like I said, not a lot of people signed up, so. We'll have to figure out a way, maybe knock on doors, I don't know, just to get people to sign up.
It's gonna be required.
It's, it's gonna be required?
Yeah. Okay, maybe required's not the right word.
Maybe you might want to use a less aggressive word? That might turn off some people, Jamie. Recommend it. How about that?
You guys wanna look at it and then we'll put it under old business and go back and talk about it.
Let's put it under old business and we'll revisit it next meeting.
Did you run an executive session for Alan?
I thought it'd be kinda cool because we were wondering.
I'll do it next time. Okay, hey.
We need to amend the agenda?
Well, it's not that big of a deal. We can do it next time. We'll just be, it's just a yearly eval for Alan Moore.
We're gonna move that to new business or old business?
The code red system, the old business.
We can, yeah, if you want to, yeah, it's done.
I'll make a motion that we amend the agenda and add a five minute executive session for employee performance review.
Second.
To include. To include everyone. Oh, I'm just amending the agenda and adding it. We'll have to do the rest of that.
Got a motion on the table to amend the gen, agenda?
Add a second.
Code red and a second, Mark Bryant, all in favor? All opposed?
So are we ready for that then? I'd make a motion for a five minute executive session for employee evaluation to include everyone at the table and Jason.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on what he said? All in favor?
To increase Alan Moore's pay to seventeen sixty-eight an hour per his evaluation.
Second.
Got a motion on the table by Marshall Sanders, a second from, uh, Sarah Wood to raise Alan Moore's pay to seventeen sixty-eight. On evaluation. All in favor? All opposed? Passes five and O. Is there any more discussion? If not, I'll have to send somebody to make a motion, get out of here.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor? All opposed?